Okay. Good morning. I'd like to call to order the May 12th regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission. We'd like to ask Reverend Rebecca Abel Lamar, Pastor of Government Street Presbyterian, to join us for the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh my God. This is the day that you have made, and so before all else, we will rejoice and be glad in it. We come with humble hearts today. And as this commission gathers to serve the people of Mobile County, we ask you to give them clarity in their decisions, unity in their purpose, and compassion in their leadership. Bless them with insight that honors the trust placed in them. And may all that they do and all the people of this county do reflect integrity, fairness, and respect for all. We ask for your blessing on this community, on those who lead, serve, and protect, and all who call Mobile County home. And today, we ask that you would help us to work together in peace and progress for the good of all. Amen.
Yours allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Rebecca. We have a resolution today. We would ask Division Staff Officer Apol Kilian if you would join us down here. This is the...
This is a time of year when we recognize National Safe Boating Week, where as many residents engage in boating, fishing, and other recreational activities on the navigable waters around Mobile County, Alabama, and where as about 10% of U.S. household own or co-own a recreational vessel of some kind, including open powerboats, cabin powerboats, personal watercraft, and paddlecraft, such as kayaks and canoes. And whereas in calendar year 2023, the most recent year for which data are available, the Coast Guard counted 3,844 accidents that involved 564 deaths, 2,126 injuries, and approximately $63 million of damage to property because of recreational boating accidents. And whereas the majority of these accidents are caused by human error or poor judgment and not by the boat equipment or environmental factors, boating safety courses and boating safety campaigns can teach people how to adhere to better boating practices and help them to boat more safely. And whereas the United States Coast Guard statistics show that of the accidents where the level of operator education was known, 75% of boating deaths occurred on boats where the boat operator had never received boating education instruction. And whereas alcohol use remains a leading contributing factor in fatal boating accidents, operator inattention and inexperience are also leading contributing factors in mishaps causing hundreds of accidents and dozens of fatalities annually. And whereas the U.S. Coast Guard considers operator use of engine cutoff switches to be important, because when operators of powerboats are ejected or fall overboard, the boat would typically continue to operate until it runs out of fuel, runs aground, or collides with another boat or object. And whereas of reported boating accident victims who drowned in 2023, 87% were not wearing a life jacket. A significant number of voters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today had they worn their life jackets. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the Mobile County Commission designates the week of May 17 through 23rd, 2025, as Safe Boating Week in Mobile County. We acknowledge and applaud the Coast Guard's Safe Boating Campaign and its year-round efforts to encourage safe recreational boating. And this is signed by all three commissioners and attested by our county administrator.
I'll briefly just state, the Coast Guard Auxiliary was founded in 1939 because the year before, we had 14,000 requests to the Coast Guard for aid, of which over 8,000 were perils of life. We realized that we needed to become more proactive in boat safety, so it is one of our core missions today. We have three stations here in the Mobile metropolitan area. We have the Aviation Training Center in West Mobile at the airport where all Coast Guard aviators come through. We have Sector Mobile where we have four cutters, and we have Station Dolphin Island, which is our principal search and rescue station, of which we have three boats located there. I can't impress upon you enough, when you do go out in a boat, to wear a life jacket. As the commissioner mentioned, 87% of the deaths occur because they were not wearing a life jacket. So find the best-fitting, most coolest-looking life jacket that you can find, so that you'll always wear it. Thank you very much.
Do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We have two speakers signed up for this morning. The first is Mr. David Bullwheer, Hope for All Gulf Coast, and he would like to address the commission regarding Project Homeless Connect.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Derek Bullwheer, CEO of Hope for All Gulf Coast, formerly known as Housing First. Our address is 279 North Washington, Mobile. Wanted to come to you today to let you know about this week's event, Project Homeless Connect. This is our annual event. It's a resource fair for those that are experiencing homelessness in Mobile. This is our 11th annual one of these. It's held at the grounds. It'll be from 8:00 AM till 2:00 PM this Thursday. The resources that are available for those that are experiencing homelessness, medical assistance, legal assistance. We'll have folks from the state there to issue state-issued IDs, and somewhere between 40 and 50 other agencies providing housing, job opportunities, access to resources that someone that is currently experiencing homelessness would find of value and of benefit. So again, to you, and we would ask you, if you can, please attend. I want to thank you all publicly for your support over the years of our efforts to end homelessness in Mobile. And this is another opportunity for us as a community to pull together in that pursuit. And again, thank you all. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Derek, I guess I was unaware that there was a name change. It's Hope for All Gulf Coast?
Yes, ma'am. Well, so our agency has been in existence for about 30 years here in Mobile, and we've had a couple of different name changes. The Housing First name has been around for almost 20 years. We thought, considering our street outreach efforts, our work as a coordinated entry service for Mobile, we're also the data and collection people for all federal funds that come in for homelessness in Mobile. So since our services are as broad as they are, and our opportunities to help people go beyond just housing, we thought it was a good time to change the name to better illustrate our value to those that are experiencing homelessness. So yes, we're officially Hope for All Gulf Coast.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you all for your support of our efforts and our mission to end homelessness.
Do you mind, if you don't mind for the public, for public purpose, will you give some contact resources so that people may be able to get in touch with you? And some of the, I know, but for the public's purposes, the services that you provide and how people can get in touch with you for those services?
Our email address is, well, our website is very easy. It's hfal.org. And with that, you can access all of our resources currently that we offer. So I would ask you to go there first. But if you know someone's homeless, and maybe you just, you've seen them on the street at a certain location month over month, we have a street outreach team that will go out to that individual if they can't get to us on North Washington. And we can meet with them, we can talk to them, we can give them the information they need, and transport them to our office if need be, so they can meet with a case manager and have their information recorded, so that if housing is available or other resources are available, we can better serve them that way. But I would start with our website, and of course, there's contact numbers on there. They can call us. But yes.
Thank you. And you co-locate the Waterfront Rescue Mission, right?
We do. That's, thank you for bringing that up. If you know where Waterfront Rescue Mission is, they're going to be on the right side of the building, we're on the left side of the building. And so our regular office hours are Monday through Friday, between 8:00 and 5:00. So you're likely to find someone there that can assist you at any point during that time. And again, this Thursday, at the grounds, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. If you're homeless or know someone that's homeless, please let them know about this event. Last year, we served a little over 535 people on that one day that met the government's definition of homeless. We had over 600 volunteers. So it's by far the largest single opportunity that we have as a community to pull together and to help this community answer the question of how do we end homelessness. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a second speaker this morning, Mr. Dan McCrory, and he would like to address the commission to say thank you.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dan McCrory. I'm the Executive Director for the Utilities Board of the City of Balabatri. My address is 13321 North Wenzel Avenue, Balabatri. When I took over as Executive Director, the county had already started the Restore Act projects. And when I got here, I was trying to figure out how in the world do I get caught up to speed on these projects? Didn't have a contact, didn't know, because I contacted Jay Rossi, said, "You need to talk to Matthew Jones." Put me in touch with Matthew Jones, who introduced me to his staff, which was Tina Sanchez, Karina Calhoun, and Andrew Torres. I want to tell you how stellar employees these four are at getting me up to speed and getting me involved with these projects. You have employees here that are just second to none. And I want, people are quick to complain in life, but they're not quick to pass out accolades, but I, on the other hand, will. And I can't thank them enough for getting, because this has been a hard project, as y'all are very well aware, and they have done, gone way above and beyond in trying to get these projects off the ground and get them started. So I wanted to come out and tell y'all, thank you, thank you, those four, because they have been nothing but helpful. And they are continuing to do nothing but give, and give, and give. So when it comes time for raises, keep them in mind. So they had no idea I was going to say that, okay? So I want to get that disclaimer. But I want, it's good to have employees, like, great employees are very, very hard to find, and you have four outstanding employees that are always keeping me up to speed, keeping me up to the latest, getting me to the right meetings with them. So my hats are off to them, and thank y'all very much, and thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great job.
No more speakers.
Just a brief announcement to the audience. The application for the local approval for CED landfill by TIGS Holdings was withdrawn and will not be considered today by the commission.
Let me interrupt you. Mr. Kelly, I saw you here, and I assume that that's what it was about, and I'd gotten, I tried to get word to you this week, so that you didn't have to come down, but I do want you to know that that application has been withdrawn, so we won't be taking action on it. And also, I know that you had some questions about the dirt pit across the street. If you want to hang around, thank you for being here.
Ask the commission to consider the following. One, approve a list of claims.
Some moved.
Second.
Two, hold public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Action Plans for Program Years 2019, 21, 22, 23, and 24. This information has been available to the public since April 9th.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers for or against this item? Hearing now, the public hearing is now closed.
Three, adopt substantial amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Action Plans for Program Years 2019, 21, 22, 23, and 24, following the comment period and public hearing.
Some moved.
Second.
Four, hold public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program Year 2020 Action Plan. This information has been available to the public since April 30th.
The public hearing is now in session. Are there any speakers? Hearing now, the public hearing is now closed.
Five, adopt substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Program Year 2020 Action Plan, following the comment period and public hearing.
Some moved.
Second.
Six, hold public hearing to receive citizens' comments regarding the proposed formal amendment to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Grant Agreement. This information has been available to the public since April 30th.
The public hearing is now open. Are there any speakers? Hearing now, the public hearing is closed.
Seven, adopt formal amendment to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Grant Agreement, following the comment period and public hearing.
Some moved.
Second.
Eight, authorize adoption and submission of the 2025 through 2029 five-year consolidated plan and 2025 year-one action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorize the commission president to execute all necessary documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Nine, authorize read広tisment to rebid revenue commission UPS upgrades. No bids were submitted.
Some moved.
Second.
Ten, approve alcohol application of Dolgen Corp. for retail beer and table wine off-premises-only license for Dollar General store on Wolf Road South in Sims.
Some moved.
Second.
Eleven, approve sponsorship agreement with 100 black men of Greater Mobile in the amount of $1,200 from District One Education Funds for its 24th Annual Gala and Scholarship Awards to be held May 29th.
Some moved.
Second.
Twelve, approve sponsorship agreement with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $4,048 from District One Education Funds to assist Citronell High School with the cost of travel expenses to the Future Business Leaders of America National Leadership Conference to be held June 29th through July 2nd in Anaheim, California.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirteen, approve appropriation contract with the March Quilts in the amount of $1,000 from District One Commission Funds to assist with the cost of supplies and equipment to create a quilt to commemorate the survivors of the clotilda to be displayed at the Afriktown Heritage House.
Some moved.
Second.
Fourteen, approve appropriation contract with Chickasaw City Schools Board of Education in the amount of $30,960 from District One Education Funds for its summer academic enrichment program.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifteen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $4,048 from District One Education Funds to assist Matty T. Blunt High School with the cost of travel expenses to the Future Business Leaders of America National Leadership Conference to be held June 29th through July 2nd in Anaheim, California.
Some moved.
Second.
Fifteen, approve appropriation contract with the Board of School Commissioners of Mobile County in the amount of $15,000 from District One Education Funds to assist Matty T. Blunt High School with the cost of travel expenses to the National History Day Contest to be held June 8th through June 12th at the University of Maryland in College Park.
Some moved.
Second.
Seventeen, approve appropriation contract with the Afriktown Heritage Preservation Foundation in the amount of $25,000 from District One Commission Funds for general operating expenses.
Some moved.
Second.
Eighteen, adopt resolution authorizing joint purchases agreement with Creola, Chickasaw, Citronell, Saraland, Setsuma, Sims, Mount Vernon, Balabatri, Dolphin Island, and Pritchard for purchases off the county's annual bids.
Some moved.
Second.
Nineteen, approve sponsorship agreement with the Board's Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama for, in the amount of $1,500 from District One Education Funds for its Youth of the Year Dinner to be held on May 22nd.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty, approve sponsorship agreement with Miss Mobile Bay Organization in the amount of $1,000 from District Two Education Funds for its scholarship fundraiser to be held on November 2nd.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-one, adopt resolution authorizing request of the county garage dispose of certain items from fixed assets inventory list, declare a surplus, and authorize items to be disposed.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-two, approve first amended appropriation contract between the county and Afriktown Redevelopment Corporation to extend and expand reporting and project completion deadlines.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-three, authorize letter of support for MediaCom's broadband grant application to extend fiber to the home broadband service to the residents in the city of Saraland through the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment Program.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-four, approve interim report of the opioid needs assessment prepared by Helios Alliance, and authorize the commission president to sign all necessary agreements that are in accordance with the interim report to be paid from the county's opioid settlement funds for the initiatives as follows.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-five, consider taking the following action on bids.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve renewal of the service agreement with Knox Pex Control in the amount of $350 for Centicon Termite Monitoring for Grand Bay St. Elmo Community Center.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-seven, approve renewal of subscription agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of $1,345.05 for Acrobat Pro for teams for the sheriff's office.
Some moved.
Second.
Twenty-eight, approve 36-month lease agreement with Xerox Corporation under current state of Alabama contract for one copier in the amount of $115.79 per month for the 13th Judicial Court Police Office.
Some moved.
Second.
And commissioners, we will revise item 29 as follows. Approve amending item 24 from the May 28th, 2024 Mobile County Commission meeting to remove the language, quote, "for the term of one year," unquote, to correct a clerical error.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty, approve contract amendment number three with Thompson Engineering for a project extension of effluent force main from Balabatri Wastewater Treatment Facility to add Phase One Rebid Services.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-one, authorize read広tising and receiving bids for a project extension of effluent force main from Balabatri Wastewater Treatment Facility Phase One. No responsive bids were received at the previous bid opening.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve sponsorship agreement with the Boys and Girls Clubs of South Alabama in the amount of $3,000 from District Three Education Funds for its Kids Wishin' to Go Fishing Event to be held on June 21st.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-three, approve sponsorship agreement with Afriktown Community Development Corporation in the amount of $2,500 from District One Education Funds for its Afriktown Bridge Challenge to be held on June 7th.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-four, approve refund for tobacco tax stamps damaged and destroyed as follows.
Some moved.
Thirty-five, approve agreement with Utilities Board of the Town of Citronell doing business at South Alabama Utilities to provide materials for Project Escataba Off-Site Waterline Extension.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-six, award bid to Norden Contracting Company for Project Escataba Off-Site Waterline Extension for their low bid in the total amount of $357,182, and authorize execution of contract documents.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approve alcohol application for retail beer license on or off premises for El Wanawato Taco Shop on Ol Pascagoula Road in Theodore.
Some moved.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve change order number three with Mid-America Golf and Landscape for Mobile County Golf Course Project Golf Course Phase. This change order will increase the contract by $109,739.75, with no increase to contract time, and the new contract will be in the amount of $14,340,760.42.
Some moved.
Second.
Second. Thirty-nine, approve thirty-six-month license agreement with Samstera for vehicle camera system software for the sheriff's office as follows.
Some moved.
Second. Forty, approve proposed and final plat of Pogway nine eleven subdivision, and proposed and final plat of Pew Estates, and proposed and final plat of JP Marlin subdivision, and proposed and final plat of re-subdivision of Lot Three Bentley's Cove.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-one, approve setting the speed limits for roads, segments of roads, and subdivision streets as follows.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-two, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and easements from the property owners for the projects as follows.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-three, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track thirteen on Saint Michael Street in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars for Project Saint Michael Street and Reva Road Gray Drain Base and Pave.
Some moved.
Hey, Kim, are we gonna change the name of that project to just Saint Michael Street in light of our conversation last week?
For now, for now, we're moving forward with the right-of-way acquisition on Saint Michael and Saint Michael Street East, and we're just leaving the description as is for the time being.
Okay.
But when, we'll make an adjustment before we bid it.
All right, thank you. Second.
Forty-four, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track eleven on Brim Drive in the amount of three thousand eight hundred dollars for Projects Bass Drive, Brim Drive, and Strike Drive Gray Drain Base and Pave.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-five, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track six on Ziegler Boulevard in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars for Project Ziegler Boulevard additional lanes.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-six, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track four on Monroe Lane in the amount of three thousand five hundred dollars for Project Monroe Lane Gray Drain Base and Pave.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-seven, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement for Track seven on Notches Trace Road in the amount of two thousand ninety-five dollars for Project Notches Trace Road Gray Drain Base and Pave.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-eight, approve right-of-way and/or easement agreement in the total amount of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents for Project Moore's Road Gray Drain Base and Pave to be divided as follows.
Some moved.
Second. Forty-nine, adopt resolution for the preliminary engineering and construction agreement for a project between the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation and Mobile County Commission for traffic signal upgrades at the signalized intersections on state and local routes throughout Mobile County, and authorize the President of the Commission to execute the resolution and the agreement on behalf of the county.
Some moved.
Second.
Will we get a list of this when it's published? I noticed it was not in office.
List, published list. My apologies. It should be in there, and I'll get that to you today.
Fifty, authorize advertising and receiving bids for Projects Chickasaw Streets Gray Drain Base and Pave and Resurfacing.
Some moved.
Second. Fifty-one, approve functional reclassification of the roads as follows.
Some moved.
Second. Fifty-two, adopt resolution authorizing the acquisition of certain real property on Lloyd's Lane Tracks thirty-four, thirty-five, forty-one, and forty-two by eminent domain for Project Lloyd Road Gray Drain Base and Pave.
Some moved.
Second. Fifty-three, approve final plat of Rossfield Phase One B and accept road rights-of-way as shown on the subdivision plat for the streets as follows, and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as it affects said roads, and accept the warranty deed for the rights-of-way indicated on the plat.
Some moved.
Second. Fifty-four, approve final plat of Heritage Lake Phase Two A and accept road rights-of-way as shown on the subdivision plat for the streets as follows, and accept the roads in the subdivision for maintenance by Mobile County together with drainage system as it affects said roads, and accept the warranty deed for the rights-of-way indicated on the plat.
Some moved.
Second. Fifty-five, authorize application for federal assistance for the Jeremiah A Denton Airport in the amount of one million twelve thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars for Jeremiah A Denton Airport, replacement of bulkhead phase three. Also, adopt resolution authorizing the County Commission to make an application to the state of Alabama, acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation for state airport funding in the amount of twenty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Some moved.
Second. Fifty-six, award bid for Jeremiah A Denton Airport Replacement Bulkhead Phase Two to Figure's Construction and Development for their low bid in the amount of nine hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, pending approval of grant funds.
Some moved.
Second. Fifty-seven, approve concurrence with the Alabama Department of Transportation for awarding the bid for Project McDonald Road Additional Lanes to Frank Turner Construction Company for their low bid in the amount of eight million six hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-one cents, and also approve payment of invoice for county matching funds for the cost of construction and construction inspection for the project in the amount of one million two hundred and ninety-three thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirteen cents, for a total amount of nine million nine hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-four cents.
Some moved.
Kim, this is from, I guess, I ten to Old Pascagoula Road.
Yes, sir.
Right. Second.
Fifty-eight, Commission announcements and/or comments.
Nine, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't you want, did you want, aren't you having a groundbreaking this week or something?
What would I do without you? You want to, to just, sure.
Certainly. We're having a groundbreaking for Lewis Landing, which is a pocket park off of Conception Street Road, and it'll be Wednesday morning at ten AM, and we're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Could happen to get anything else.
I just want to make sure everybody knows.
Thank you.
Approve request for motion to adjourn until May twenty-seventh.
Some moved.
Second.
You stand adjourn, have a great week.